Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any changes to the agenda? Does anyone have anything?
I have nothing.
No can you approve?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes. No special presentations and appearances tonight, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in two seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
New business, award of contract for graphic and marketing design. Hi Amanda.
Yeah.
I do not have strip, I'm here.
I don't know what I have, but if it didn't go away soon, I'm gonna trade it in for some strip.
I just want her to stay awake. We were leased in the spring.
No, it's just, I think it's allergy, which I've never had in my life.
We released a solicitation for graphic design and marketing services, and it was a really broad solicitation. We wanted, our goal was to be able to procure multiple contracts with folks who offered a wide variety of services, particularly for tourism and economic development, but also broadband authority and anyone else in the county who might need a logo, a website, a brochure, branding, photography, videography, really as much as we could fit. And since most firms either specialize in the videography side, or photography side, or graphic design side, we were able to, after a very, very long process, narrow it down from twenty-five folks who provided very thick proposals with examples, down to the six before you that you see today. It does happen that these firms are mostly native to Virginia. They represent small firms and then very large firms. They represent firms that, like I mentioned earlier, specialize in more of the social media, digital marketing, others that do basic website design, branding, campaigns and things of that nature. And we're asking to execute a contract with all of these firms for one year with the possibility of four one-year renewals. And as I mentioned, these would be available to everyone in the county and the broadband authority, whoever needs any one of their expertises.
Are, within this group of, what is it, six it looks like?
Yes, sir.
Is there a good bit of overlap in terms of skills and capabilities? Or are they, they tend to specialize six different ways?
They tend to specialize, but yes, there is a significant amount of overlap. So, most of them have a graphic designer, most of them have a content manager, but some tend to do more with brochures and marketing campaigns and ads that Lori could use. Others, the Platinum PR Group, for example, specifically specializes in economic development-type brochures and kind of like salesy material that Phil and Rose could use. Hagashi and Charles Ryan and Communication Design specifically have worked with either local government or authority-type nonprofit organizations for various types of campaigns. Charles Ryan is actually the largest company in this group. They have, I think, four or five offices, two of which are in the Commonwealth. So, their folks in Richmond, I'm not sure if that's maybe just their graphic design folks, but they have over three hundred folks on staff that they could reach out to if we had a specific question or concern. So, we tried to get a wide variety here on the list. And we're not obligated to use any of them. It's just a retainer like our engineering contracts, we have them if we need them.
And so, they would price a particular task and?
Yes, sir, we requested hourly rates in the contracts, and then we would get scopes from them for certain projects.
Okay.
And hourly rates range, depending on whether you're a designer one, or you know, social media expert, from about seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five an hour, which is industry standard.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion?
Second.
No second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proceed and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Virginia Department of Transportation Transportation Land Use Permit Resolution. Mr. David.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we are in the process of getting the required permits from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Mountain Track Tower Site. As part of that process, VDOT requires applicants are using, building these commercial entries post to bond. Because you are a governing body, there's an ability to adopt a resolution in lieu of posting cash surety. And so, we bring to you tonight a draft resolution. County attorney has reviewed it, approved it as to form. I think Stephanie can fill in some of the details if you have questions about the actual part of the project, but this is just to, to put you all's motion instead of a bond.
This is just for an entrance, is that right? That was the one thing I was, or is it more than that? Is it just an entrance?
It is just, well, yes, a very, very short driveway. It's only about twelve feet by thirty-five feet.
Okay.
Very small, but it is going to, instead of using the same entrance as the collection site and turning to the left, we're just having our own entrance right off Mountain Track Road. It will be directly to the left of the current entrance that is there.
This resolution only applies to this particular project?
Yes, sir. It's the only one where I have to have a separate entrance.
So, we, we're bonding ourselves in effect.
No.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, old business, revenue sharing application requests for Willholtz Mill Cost Sharing. Ms. Simpson.
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully request that we delay discussion of this matter until you all have had the opportunity to hear from citizens during the five-thirty public comment period.
All right. Department Director Constitutional Reports, I see none. County Attorney Report?
None report.
Okay. County Administrator's Report, Legislative Priorities.
Yes, sir. You're ongoing.
Boy, was that a large truck I found under the covers of my computer.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to reduce the count, but I have at several meetings getting input from you all on what your legislative priorities will be for the upcoming General Assembly Session. And just kind of recap where we are. Ellen James came and presented some information to you on August twenty-seventh, and you've had some discussion, but you wanted to consider adding certain priorities along with the other existing ones, primarily concerning the final phase of the watershed implementation plan, what is known as WIP III, essentially stating that the regulations need to take into account the current engineering, the limits of current engineering technology and standards, and don't put in requirements for where there's no realistic or cost-effective engineering solution to meet for neutral reductions. The next is a full, I guess, throated support for the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative Program, which I was at a meeting conference and has been officially said it's VODI, not batty or battai, I was told it was VODI, so. And that came from Ms. Dozier, so she. Ms. Dozier or Ms. Dozier?
I'm really not certain that there can be a, you know, an official pronunciation of an acronym.
I may even have mispronounced it, batty, yeah, batty I think was the one. So, anyhow, I digress. And then, the other priority that put in was for the same batty program, but recognize flexibility with internet service providers. If a locality cannot secure one, and I was talking with some of the principals at this meeting about that very issue. Ones that have also been under past discussion with a total and permanent disability for local real estate tax exemption, particularly regarding veterans, calculation composite index, and the polling place. This one has gone through a bit of an evolution since I first brought it to you all's attention after early voting. I had conversations continuing with the registrar, Ms. Harpold, and also was on a conference call arranged by VACO with the Department of Electoral Staff. I will admit, I guess, to stand down, that the ability to get the state to change the way the rules work is probably not a lift that's gonna happen this next session. And so, where we've ended up, at least I want to share with you, is that legislative relief for this does not seem viable. And Ms. Harpold is certainly prepared to host the early voting at the registrar's office. The logistics of this just has to deal with the parking and maybe either, you know, putting out some reserve parking, you know, with bottlers or something like that marked for early voters, or employee parking, and certainly there's a number of county vehicles that could be relocated.
Is there any kind of a requirement for curbside voting like you have at the, a lot of the other?
I would imagine that that would still apply.
So, then we would end up having to have staff down there available.
Incoming, coming, so. I think we'll work through, I think Mr. Goodman and Mr. Crozier were part of a group that met. The Electoral Board's very interested in this. I think with all of our heads and shoulders put to the wheel, I think we can figure out how to make it work for that week. But she and I both agreed, and from all reports of folks in other communities, my colleagues, professional colleagues in local government management, along with hers and the registrar, that this cumulatively will only get larger as time goes on, so that the voting population that will do early voting will only increase, which this may be one that we can do for next year or so, but long-term we may be thinking alternative locations. I put together a draft for you all, did the red line strike out in that. So, that brings us up to date for this. One other, housekeeping, when you adopt these priorities, then they'll be shared with Mr. James and with VACO, they'll be informed, as well as our legislators.
Do we need a motion to approve these tonight?
If you can take them under advisement, you can bring back another meeting. Obviously, we're at the point now where if.
One item that I, which is at least the version I have, it starts on line number one fifty-eight talking about the Phase Three WIP. I happened to be in a meeting last Wednesday, I think it was, with the Rappahannock River Basin Commission, and there was a person there from DEQ giving an update of the implementation, Phase Three implementation. And there may come a time when we need to make some comment on that process, because what he was showing is that there's gonna be a real challenge to make the goals by 2025. I'll have to get a copy and provide it to the board, because it's interesting. There's this one chart, a bar chart that shows the, of all of the loading going into the bay, what are the sources? And, you know, there's a little fraction of it that is wastewater treatment facilities, because they've been tightened down pretty much, and so those point sources are relatively modest in terms of the overall contribution. Then there's a bar that's in the order of fifteen percent, let me say, that is residential fertilizers, lawn clippings, and the like. Then there's another piece that's like five or eight percent, as I recall, that are failing septic systems, residential septic systems. And then there's a piece for agriculture, which is about twenty percent, or maybe a little more, twenty-five maybe. And then there's a piece called natural sources.
There's deer out there.
Deer, raccoons, geese, leaves, you name it, which was a little over twenty percent. And as, and after all of that, my point is, to get to the goal, and I made this comment in the session, we would have to eliminate all natural sources. We'd have to take that twenty percent off the table entirely, under some magic formula for dealing with the natural sources in order to meet the 2025 goal. That just puts it in context for you of how far we yet have to go. And the problem is, the way they're going to implement this penalty, penalties for failure, won't be directly on us, because we're not what's called an MS four area. We don't have, we haven't, we haven't agreed to certain limits. But what they're going to start doing is not approving permits for land disturbance, not approving building permits, not approving site plans and these kind of things. So, that's the leverage they have to shut you down as a state, basically. EPA has as a state, if you're not gonna comply. So, back to my leaded comment, this might be a topic that eventually we have to develop an approach of how we're gonna deal with it, because it's, you know, the time is now relatively short. The can is being kicked down the road to some extent, but now it's getting to the point where the order of magnitude that we're dealing with is one that is, this could be really serious. I'm not, I'm not intending to sound any alarm bells necessarily, it's just that the facts are beginning, well, the facts are beginning to be concerning.
I took a stab at drafting, I mean, this at least communicates.
Well, but, and the point is, it's more than the engineering and standards like that. This whole rollout, right now, their solution is, you know, get it all from agriculture, by voluntary programs, you know, through the best management practice and things like that. And that's fine, I mean, you can get some of it, but just like you would have to eliminate all natural sources, you would almost have to eliminate all agricultural.
So, basically, we need to get rid of twenty percent of what we've, what we've got out there, and the other things are so small that they're not gonna make much of a dent in that.
That's right. There's only two places to really go, ag and natural. And if you're depending on, if you believe the definition of natural is truly natural, then it's all ag, and you can get there.
Should I try to add something to that?
Probably painful, but go ahead.
I'll show you the information, I have a copy of the briefing, and we can, we can talk about it. Or you may have a conversation with Eldon, just to get some feedback from him.
Okay.
I made the comment in the meeting. Are you saying to this group that you're gonna find a way of dealing with the natural loading? Because that's, you'd have to shut that down completely to meet the goal.
Well, who are we addressing it to?
Well, DEQ, DEQ is the point organization for us right now. But DEQ has made promises to EPA.
That's good, you got one group of zealots talking to another group of zealots and.
Bingo.
That don't have to live in the real world.
Bingo, you should hear the conversations sometime, it's, it's.
So, you had another comment?
No, sir, I can take, and I, with Mr. White, and I certainly talked to Eldon James about it, but I can come back and add something in here that addresses sources as being also an area that they need to take into account and the viability of.
Well, they need to put a plan in place that says how we're gonna get there. Is this something we should stick in there so that the legislature understands the same bar chart you were looking at and looks at it from the standpoint of how are we gonna manage DEQ to do this?
That's probably the right next step, yeah.
Is there, is there something we could put together for this next legislative session?
Yeah, I think VACO is probably going to be one of the lead organizations on.
Well, the problem with VACO is that they're not, they're not being as blunt as I've just been about it. They're going along to get along.
Mr. James can be blunt about all of this.
He heard me, he was sitting very close.
Why don't I work on some additional language, certainly, to your help, Mr. White, and then we'll bring that, this back with that. Is there anything else in here that you want to tinker around with? So, what I can do is come back at your next meeting with a revised, a final draft, and that with the Phase Three of the watershed, the WIP Plan.
I'd still keep that particular comment you got in there, but saying that something to the effect that we have to, we have to direct a larger scale problem that needs to be looked at.
Or that the maximum, or the limits that they're trying to impose cannot be reasonably achieved without a disruption to agribusiness, and, you know, how do you, how do you deal with natural sources? So, I can work on that.
I've heard some lunatics talking about riparian or fence buffers.
Haven't those natural sources been going into the Chesapeake for a few thousand years?
And I believe they're understated. I read an article some time ago that was said in terms of, in mature hardwood forests, every fall, there's roughly two tons of leaves.
Per acre.
Per acre. And a two-inch rain event will take something on the order of twenty percent of those and put them in the watershed. So, we're back to, we need to regulate rain, I mean, I, you know.
And they look pretty.
Rain tax, we could try.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Try the rain tax.
Well, we beat that one, but it's, it's just one of those things that, that's sitting there under the radar, and the people that are talking to each other are all just sort of shaking their head in agreement, and nobody's standing up and saying, wait a minute. And I think, the time may come when we have to say, wait a minute.
Sounds like the sooner the better, you know, maybe the legislature won't do anything on it, but if they at least are being advised that they have to, that is a problem that's gonna have significant impact across the state.
I'll come back with a final draft for you all the next meeting.
Thank you. All right. To your strategic priorities, do you have something additional on that?
This is just for your information, there's no action. As you know, each, in April seventeen, or eighteen, excuse me, came up with two of your priorities. Certainly, I'm certainly very pleased with all the progress that we're making on a number of fronts. Certainly want to recognize Stephanie and Louis, in particular, for all of the things that have been accomplished here, having to do with broadband. And that list will only keep getting longer and longer as we move forward with all the various initiatives. So, and then certainly Kurt's in the back room working with the GWAP utilities. So, that's for your information. This will be posted on the website, so if you have anybody interested in what you're doing, then I would certainly point to this document.
I will also add that our priorities were topic of conversation in last night's forum.
Yes, they were.
Both Mr. Goodman and I referenced those in several different ways, as did Mr. Frink in a written, so we were, we're, those are real, and we're, as we know, we're using them, and we're also talking about them, so. Okay. We have a couple of minutes before our public comment period, anybody have board comment? All right.
Thank the chamber for holding the event last night. I thought it went very well.
Very well attended.
Very well managed. So, always good, except for the chairs. Way too hard, way too hard.
Any other, any other board comment? All right, any question on the information items? All right, well, appointments.
I would like to reappoint DeNaldo Lovelace and David Francis to the Rappahannock Rapidan Community Services Board.
Okay. And I have a, I guess it's technically a recommendation to the Circuit Court to appoint Ron Burleson to the BZA for District Two.
And that will be a recommendation to, to the.
To the judge.
To the chief judge.
Any others?
The Board of Building Code Appeals, Allison, do we know whether those two gentlemen, are they eligible? Do they want to serve again?
They are eligible, I have not reached out to gauge their interest yet, but I, I can.
Okay, could you do that?
Yes, sir.
I was confused by the first one, and maybe it's just mislabeled. On the Airport Commission, as Benny Soderbergh is a District Two rep.
I, I don't know that he lives in District Two. I thought he lived in District Three.
I thought he was in, I actually.
No, because when you go to Lakeland, Benny's house is annexed at the top of the hill.
Is that not one? I know it is District Two, but we probably need to verify that.
Yeah, I mean, we have him listed as District Two in our database and on the Airport Commission.
I mean, that's, that's fine, I think he actually, I think he actually lives in District One.
Well, he probably was District Two before we redistricted.
Right.
Ten years ago. Takes a while for these things to work. Yeah.
Why hurry? I mean, this is.
It may go back.
Maybe we ought to wait and see where he lands after the next redistricting, then deal with it.
All right, all in favor of those appointments and recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Any questions on the calendar? We will open the floor for public comment here momentarily. What is the actual time? Five twenty-seven, so in three minutes.
You can open it now, as long as it's still open at five-thirty.
Okay, all right.
You've shown on the agenda it's open at five-thirty, so as long as at five-thirty it's still open. I like that.
That's what we will do. Except someone took my offer to stands. So, I'll get a cup of coffee.
Looking at the math here.
Oh, okay.
Trying to figure out where, trying to figure out where people live.
I think it's one. I think it's now one, it might have been one point two.
Well, yeah, because before, you had Zach was bringing out Bull Riding, because that was in his district back then.
Yeah. Okay, it's time for public comment. Open the public comment period, do we have anyone signed up, Ms. Allison?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we currently have three residents signed up to speak. The first is William Templeton, one zero one six eight Willholtz Mill Road.
Okay.
If you could come to the podium, please.
I'm William Templeton. I live, as she said, one oh one six eight. I've been on Willholtz Mill Road for thirty years. Want to encourage and to support any possibility of that road being paved and improved. At the moment, there are probably thirty to thirty-five vehicles that use that road two, three times a day. But with this oncoming new subdivision down there, you can add at least fifty vehicles a day, two or three times a day. Plus, there's gonna be numerous lumber trucks, block trucks, single trucks, concrete trucks, and lots of contractor trucks. That road is really not safe even right now, but it's certainly not gonna be safe with all the additional traffic. The dust in the summertime is horrendous, and in fact, was so yesterday. They today sprayed it, so they laid it down a little bit. The mud in the wintertime isn't good. So, certainly I would be in favor of it from that standpoint. I'm in favor of it too, because as I understand, and again, I don't claim to know a whole lot here, but as I understand a revenue sharing project, that means the state of Virginia's gonna take about half of it, and that the developer's gonna take the other half, and that the residents do not get charged for this improvement. And if I'm correct about that, I'm certainly in favor of that. Some would say that our taxes are gonna go up, and that we'll get charged more tax to help pay for it. Well, the only way I see our taxes going up is because. Well, the only way I see our taxes going up is because our property values are going to increase. Well, I'm in favor of property values increasing. That's like money in the savings account. So if I have to pay a little tax on that, that's all right. I would just really encourage us to do this. It's probably more important to me than it would be to those who live within a couple of hundred yards of Route six oh nine. I'm a mile from six oh nine. But there's gonna be a whole lot of people that's gonna be further than that when the subdivision comes. And my final comment to you is this, it's not if the subdivision's gonna come, it's just a matter of when. They have done a, they have done a very fine job. Somebody spent a lot of money on it. They've done a fine job, and those roads they have put in far supersede six ten or Will Hoyt's Mill Road. My goodness. It is my personal opinion that if the developer were to go down there right now and build a home on one of those lots that face on that real nice road he put in there, that it would just be barnstorm after that, that it would go. So I'm convinced it's not if, it's when, and before long, that thing will build out. And when it does, we're gonna have more traffic, more trouble. We're gonna need school buses in there to, to handle that population. And then, uh, the final thing, there are some Green County residents who of course don't feel comfortable being here. But the only way they can get to their property is down Will Hoyt's Mill Road. It's the only entrance. Uh, they come in there and they turn off of Will Hoyt's Mill Road, and within fifty, seventy-five feet, they're in Green County. And that's the way it is with that subdivision, most of it, and if not all of it, is in Green County. But you can't get to it unless you come down Will Hoyt's Mill Road. And so to me, it just makes good sense, and I would, uh, again, just voice my approval and my support. And, uh, I hope that it will come to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Nancy Richardson, resident of Scoffletown Road.
Some of you I know, some of you I don't, but I have a real problem with this issue, and that problem being Green County. There are four school buses that go in that road now, and more and more of my front yard is being taken not only by the buses, but by all of the trucks and the other vehicles that travel that road. Where the subdivision is going in is Green County. Right now, Orange County maintains the road for Green County. Orange has two school buses that go in and pick up Orange students. That's not a problem. The problem I have is with Green County. Green County never offers to put any gravel on the road. They never work that road. They never show themselves on that road. And with this housing development going in, all of the money is going into Green County from there. Why does Orange County have to work the road for Green County? I have a real grave concern over that. I don't mind my tax dollars going for working the road, but I mind my tax dollars going to, to help Green. In the wintertime, the line is right there on six oh nine, where Orange turns into Green. Green will scrape down to the line, lift their blade, turn around in my front yard, go back to the line, drop the blade, and scrape. Orange will come through and scrape all the way through into Green County, up to the church, turn around and scrape all the way back. If Orange can show that consideration to Green, why can't Green show it to Orange? And I, you know, I don't have a problem with the road being gravelled. I don't have a problem with it being hard surfaced. My problem is my tax dollars. And what is Green going to do to help with this? Because I don't think it's fair for Orange to have to foot the bill for all of this, and Green does nothing and collects the taxes. So, no, I'm not for it. That's my, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ricky Calvin, resident of Will Hoyt's Mill Road.
I'm Ricky Calvin. I own a farm on Will Hoyt's Mill Road. I was born and raised there. It's nothing but a farm road, period. I don't mind it being paved, but seventy-five, if not eighty percent of that road's on me. And every time the state works a road, they keep coming my way farther and farther. If you widen the road, you can go on the left-hand side going in, because that's my line over on that side too, which is not coming to the right. It's like I said, it's a farm road, always has been. To me, it's a road goes nowhere. Yeah, everybody's told, go to House Development, House Development. Well, the guy who owned it before this guy bought it, had it and had it five years, same thing, never sold a thing. I cut the hair off of it for five years. So as far as I know, this guy has had it over a year. He hasn't sold nothing to you. That place has been bought and sold twenty times in my lifetime. Everybody had the same idea. I say just leave the road like it is. I don't say spend a dime with a budget. I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll close the public comment period. And let's go back to, uh, Agenda Item six A under Old Business. Allison.
Yes, sir. As you'll recall, early, earlier this summer, I presented a request to the board, um, that we had received from a developer to apply through VDOT's revenue sharing program, um, which would offer fifty-fifty funding to hard surface and improve Will Hoyt's Mill Road, um, which would be used to access the subdivision, um, situated solely in Green County. The VDOT revenue sharing program requires that, uh, a local share of fifty percent be provided, um, to match their fifty percent. And based on discussions with the developer, the local share of the funds, um, necessary to complete the project would be provided, um, by the developer. The revenue sharing application itself would have to go through the county. So that's kind of where we are. Um, following our discussion earlier this summer at the suggestion of the board, um, we did send letters to all of the residents on Will Hoyt's Mill Road, um, informing them of the request, asking for their feedback. It's my understanding that some residents have, um, spoken directly with Supervisor Johnson. We've received some letters and emails that are in front of you. You've also heard from, um, residents during public comment period this evening. Um, so at this point, with the October first application deadline approaching, um, just seeking feedback from the board on how you would like staff to proceed with this application, um, understanding that the revenue sharing application does have to be submitted by the county, um, regardless of who's, um, funding the project and who's actually completing the work. Um, it, it does have to go through the county, so just opening it up for, uh, feedbo- feedback and input from the board, um, so that we know how to proceed at the staff level.
Allison, the, the, uh, the deadline is a, that's an annual deadline, correct?
Uh, for the revenue sharing program, it is every two years. So this October first deadline, um, there won't be a funding cycle for another two years.
This, this is a, this is a real, uh, situation, because it's, it's really hard to figure out what's, what would be the best thing to do. I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to having the road paved. But it, it's, it's an odd, odd situation in that this is a development that's one hundred percent in Green County. And by the way, we, we actually don't have a signed contract with the, with the, with the developer. Uh, and I'm not clear that the developer really understands that there's only one way this is gonna work. Uh, well, there's two ways. I, I spoke with, I won't mention any names, but I spoke with someone with, with VDOT. And they seem to think the developer thinks that, that they can get two hundred and fifty thousand from the state and then pay whatever additional is needed to do the road, and that, that ain't gonna happen. Uh, they can do the road themselves under a work permit with VDOT. The developer can, can, can do the work. But I, I really, I, I'm really shaky on this because I don't think it's, I, I don't think this is set up nearly as clearly as, as, as a, sort of a yes or no issue here. I have very grave concerns about really what the developers, and, and I, wh- what the developer, uh, is willing to do here. And, and I als- also say that upfront, I told the developer, it was absolutely essential for him to meet with the people on the road and to get them on board. And he's, he's obviously got some of them on board, but he's got others that are not on board. Uh, and so, i- i- and, and this is, this is basically gonna be a paved and placed. But it's gonna require, in some cases, slight realignment. And I don't think the people whose land is, is gonna be taken have bought into that.
Do we know how much right-of-way VDOT, VDOT has at the moment? Does VDOT?
I don't know they have any right-of-way.
It's just a prescriptive easement.
They got, what's that?
A prescriptive easement.
Yes, prescriptive easement. And this VDOT representative said, you know, well, theoretically, VDOT has a thirty-foot right-of-way. Yeah, well, theoretically, yeah, but no, you don't.
Not theoretical.
Landowners own to the middle of the road. And so, and, and, and then they, and then the next problem is, so we're gonna pave the road, and then they're gonna run all those trucks in there to, to build the road, to build the development. It's gonna destroy the road. And it won't be no revenue sharing to fix the road back. That's all gonna come from the, from the state. So, this is, this is, I, if I could snap my fingers and there'd be a nice road, it's all paved, and we're all good to go, I, I would do that. But I just don't see that that's where we are with this. And I don't have a good feeling about that the developer really understands how this, how this is gonna work. And that if this road ends up costing eight hundred thousand, he's gonna have to pony up four hundred grand.
Is he aware of the significance of the October first date?
I think he knows that, yeah.
And that, that's a two-year?
I've talked at length with him and, um, corresponded in writing, following my conversations with VDOT. As Mark mentioned, we, we don't have a contract with him yet, um, but I've been very clear with him of, of three issues that would have to be addressed in the contract. Um, and if, you know, not sure that he's understanding that either, but based on what we talked about with the board is his fifty percent would be required upfront. There is no, you, you don't get a check from the state for two hundred and fifty, and then you pay the difference. It's fifty-fifty. Um, so his money would be required upfront. He would be on the hook for any, um, project overages that VDOT would be looking to the county for. You know, so I've, I've made those things clear to him, but I'm not sure.
We would need a contract that covers all that so that, uh, uh, we're not on the hook for.
Yeah.
Right.
Is he local or, does anybody know if he's local or out of the area? I'm just curious.
I don't.
I, I don't know where, where they're from. I, I had a representative come by and talk to me one time, but in terms of who, who the actual.
I mean, being that we've not seen an individual's face or a representative's face is a little disconcerting as well.
Well, here's a parenthetical comment. I think going forward, uh, we need to, we need to change the way we do this, because Allison's been putting a lot of time in on this. And I really think going forward on anything like this, we, we need to do, the very first thing a developer has to do is sign a contract with us saying, you know, and, and I don't know if that involves posting a bond or whatever, but there, there needs to be some kind of a way. Because we, we spent a lot of time on this. We've got, we've sent out letters. We've gotten the neighborhood kind of stirred up, and, uh, either people are unhappy because they don't want it, or they're, they're jumping for joy because they do want it. And, and i- it's just not a very good way to go about this. We need to have the, we need to have the developer, that part of it nailed down before we go into any of this other stuff.
Might, uh, talk to the VDOT guys about, uh, how, how much of a paving are they gonna do, and how well is it gonna hold up under concrete trucks?
Well, it, it's not. It, it's real rustic.
No, I, 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 I talked to, to, um, a representative with VDOT yesterday. And, uh, you know, it will be real rustic. He said it will hold up like other roads that have been done like this. And mentioned two or three in eastern Orange County.
Yes.
And basically, he said it will break up and we'll go back in and fix it, you know, well.
Whether it'd be better to do it after the, uh, after the majority of the construction.
I mean, they have, they have, to, to, to a couple of the points made by Mr., uh, uh, Templeton and Mr. Calvin. I mean, they have, that's a big piece of land, and they have done a lot of work. I went back and driven there. And there is, there is, there's a main road that goes way back in there, and there's a branch that goes off of that. They've, they've done their electrical, they got electrical hookups all along the way. They've put a lot of money into it, but it seems like it's.
Needs to put a little more.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think maybe they should have thought more about, about access before they did all of that. Not that I'm a developer or pretend to be one, but.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like there, at this point, uh, there are questions and answers.
Yeah.
He, the developer needs to, uh, decide to meet the deadline and, and, uh, meet our requirements, uh.
And, and.
Or, or not, I mean, it's.
What, what beyond a, a, a contract would you think we need to have, Mark?
You mean with the developer?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I, I would leave that in part up to, up to Tom here on, on what we need. But we need something where, where we're not spending a lot of time and, and, and stirring up a lot of fuss, and then somebody can just back out and say, well, no, I'm not gonna do that.
Well, but to, to two points we heard tonight. I mean, the, 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 the county is not in the road business. And, and has no funds, does not spend funds on roads, building roads, maintaining roads, or doing anything to roads. And we're not about to start, so the, the contract has to protect us from that standpoint. Uh, and secondly, if there are issues of right-of-way, uh, that has to be sorted out.
And that, and, and see, that's, that's part of what I, I told the, the contract, the, the, um, representative from the contractor way back. I mean, I, I specifically talked about those things. I mean, if he does something, just gonna go in there and pour chip and tar down on the existing road, they're gonna go in and they're gonna move the road a little bit in some places and, and make the, I can't do all the jargon, uh, like, you know, but they're gonna have to.
Well, it's, it sounds like it, the, the, the message back to the developer is that he either, uh, presents the county with a contract that we can accept by October first, or he gets to wait two years.
But getting back to, to right-of-way or easements, uh, shouldn't we, shouldn't the contractor have an agreement with regard to those if they're gonna be infringing on exist-
Well, that's part of the agreement we would accept.
I think that needs to be ironed out ahead of time before the county gets involved.
Sure, sure.
Just a suggestion.
I frankly don't know why the developer doesn't just, just, just invest in some, in some gravel.
Given.
If the road is not, the, the road is, is not the worst road I've ever been on, and I don't know why the developer doesn't just go on in there and just. I mean, compared to a half million dollars, you can buy a lot of gravel and, and get the road into, into pretty good shape. But I don't understand how the developer's going about it.
It's, it's a VDOT road already. I mean, they're, the VDOT's responsible for the maintenance of it.
Right.
It has a, it has a dumper, six ten.
Right, but they could, they're allowed to, uh, they're allowed to upgrade it with a permit with VDOT. They can go in and, and, and do upgrades to the road. So to get the road into, into better condition for their, for their purposes here.
Sounds like.
And in, in, in not, I'm sorry, Jim, but, you know, like Mr. Templeton said, you're, you're gonna put at least fifty more vehicles. You're gonna put several buses from Green County on there. And this is. then you're really gonna be, then you're really gonna be putting the pressure on that road.
To Mr. Johnson's point, oftentimes developers will have a relationship with the state highway department to improve roads leading up to their development. That's not an unusual situation, but that's a transaction, that's an arrangement completely between developer and, and the state highway department. Doesn't, it only involving you all now because of this revenue sharing money that's available. Um, the only other suggestion I would make is if there was some contractual relationship, there's that two hundred and fifty thousand, but then a bond for an overreach potential of some, oh, a hundred and fifty percent of estimated cost or something like that. So that it'd be cash surety, uh, cash available to, to the county to go obtain if there was some type of.
Does the county become liable if it goes beyond any, uh, bond levels?
Well, that's what I was gonna say, no matter what contract we have with the contractor, if the contractor goes by by, the state's gonna come to Orange County and say, ooh, you know.
It, it sounds to me, since nothing's been built there, the developer hasn't come to us physically bothered to show up here.
We could ask him the kind of questions Mark's bringing up.
Well, not only that, but doesn't, it, and it sounds much more reasonable, especially living on a rural rustic road, um, that he do his construction work first. And then get the rural rustic improvement through revenue sharing or however. And with all of that, and at the speed that most things move along, it's not going to hurt him if nothing happens until the next revenue sharing cycle. That's my thought on it.
I would agree, uh, if he hadn't bothered to come to see us.
Plu- plus, uh, if he hasn't worked out with the, uh, with the existing, uh, landholders there, what kind of, uh, uh, taking they would have to do? Uh, I don't think we wanna be in that business.
And, and I will say, I, I fully understand and can appreciate a desire to have a better road there. I have no question about it, but, um.
And he may still do it.
Well, and that's to Mr. Johnson's point, I, so I, I would say that we're not.
Is there any portion of this road that's, that's in Green County?
Yes.
Do you have any idea about what fraction that we're talking about?
The last three tenths.
The last three tenths, okay.
But this would, this would include that.
Right.
It would go all the way to the, if you go down to that, you don't actually, you can't go all the way to the, to the Rapidan, this, this, this road I've been informed used to, to ford the Rapidan River. You don't go all the way down to the river now, there's a, there's a gate there. And they're, they're obviously building a fancy entrance, uh, you know, and it's, it's right down at the very end of the road.
So would Green County have to, to, uh, uh, agree to that for their portion?
Uh, it's part of this project.
Okay, alright.
The way that VDOT catalogs it is although the last three tenths is in Green County, it's all under the Louisa residency.
Do we know if they're, i- i- in, in the, I assume he has some kind of subdivision approval or site plan approvals for the, for the subdivision? Were, were there any, uh, conditions put in that approval by Green County that we're aware of in terms of? I mean, maybe there's a condition that says there has to be a road of a certain, uh, quality and surface and the like. There's nothing we could do about it, I've just.
I am unaware of, of that, uh, aspect. It's, it's been re, I mean, it's been rezoned for some time, I don't, I don't know how long, but it's, it's not something that's happened.
Recently.
Recently.
Well, I, it, it sounds like there's no action for us to take. If the developer wants to, uh, do something, he should look at the calendar and realize he needs to start counting days.
Well, we're not talking about trying to get it done by this October.
I, I don't, I don't really see how you can.
I don't see how you can get his, get the, get all the land issues resolved in that time.
Well, he, the, the problem is that he hasn't made, it, he seemingly hasn't made much effort. I, I guess he's made some effort. He, you know, he said he'd wanna talk to some residents, but it doesn't seem like he's made a, an all out effort here, uh, to
Well, as Mr.
Solve these issues.
As Mr. Colvin suggested, this, this might be just round twenty of a, of a multi-round.
And, and you have, you know, you have the, you, you have multiple stages here. I mean, you can kinda go out and get everybody on board, which he hasn't done. You can do that, but then you gotta iron out the details.
Right.
Because when you start moving a road from here, you know, even if it's only six feet, you're, you're.
You're encroaching.
You get into fence lines and you get into front yards.
Well, and even rural rustic has, has certain ditching and drainage issues dealt with, met. So I mean, it's, it's not, it's not just drive a bunch of trucks in there and dump some tar and gravel.
So, I, I, I don't wanna slam the door in this, in this developer's face, but I, I would really feel a lot better about this if he would present us with an, like an actual A to Z plan for this. And, and, and say, this is, you know, this is what we're committing to do. And yes, we'll, and one of those things being have a contract with the county which spells out some of these things we've been talking about.
And, and have the authorization to.
And, you know, uh, ha- have the right, uh.
Have we planned on, have we planned on giving him six days and say, you gotta have it done, uh, so that we can submit the application or is this?
I wouldn't, I, I would.
I wouldn't either.
Say we don't take any action and he has.
Seven hundred and thirty-six days.
Exactly, to come up with a, uh, a plan like Mr. Johnson has suggested and treat these residents in the right manner.
And I think that's the, that's the message back to him.
Yeah.
You know, the ball's in his court.
Yes, and I, I will communicate that to him.
Thanks for all your work anyway.
Uh, I think it maybe, no, I don't know, uh, maybe we need to have sort of a written communication with him.
Well, I, I think that's.
Sure. Because, you know, talking to him doesn't seem to be getting it done.
Well, I think you said the board discussed it, we had a public comment, took public comments on it, there are many issues that need to be resolved. They were, at this point, there's no, we're taking no action.
Okay.
Okay. Alright. Time to go into closed session.
Alrighty. Whereas the Board Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Discussion consideration of the assignment appointment performance salaries specific, of specific public officers, employees or employees of the public body. Discussion of consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property. Discussion open meeting will adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of public body with respect to county border. Discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity or specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities and briefings by staff members. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such coun- counsel concerning the airport. Whereas per sections, pursuant to sections two point two, thirty seven, eleven, A one, A three, A eight and A nineteen of the Code of Virginia. Such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County, hereby authorized discussion of four state matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All the papers are high?
Aye.
Lawyers used to get paid by the work, huh? All over him.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting. Public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. And that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Goodwin.
Oh, aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
And Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Okay.
Five zero.
Thank you. Okay, that's, uh, time for our two public hearings. Public hearing number one, proposed amendment to the subdivision ordinance regarding individual road access. Okay, David, you're gonna open this for us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, at your August thirteenth meeting, you authorized us to proceed with uh, scheduling a public hearing to consider these amendments. Uh, these amendments deal with the, uh, road standards, access and network design standards. These are, are refining of some, uh, other, uh, ma- refinement of amendments in the, uh, comprehensive subdivision ordinance, uh, overhaul that was done, uh, a year or so ago. Uh, the planning commission heard this and recommended its approval at its meeting on August first.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. David, before we? Yeah, I have. Now, VDOT will be approving these documents so that they will, looking at their, uh, standards. And they do, they do now, I mean, this is. Understand, understand. Uh, and so we've done that, but it would seem that, uh, our staff would also need to understand and to assist people as they're trying to go through the process and saying, okay, you need to do this and this. Because, uh, so that when they do make a submission, it's gonna meet the standards and they're not gonna have to, uh, get jerked around by VDOTs turning them down. That's all.
Y- yes, sir, if, if a, a sub divider comes in and there's particularly on these arterial primary roads.
Cause a lot of people may not know these and, uh, all the state standards. And I think that, uh, as long as our staff is aware of it, even though they're not county standards, they can, uh, they can assist somebody getting through the process.
We will absolutely.
Okay, that's all I had. Okay, any other questions of, of Brian? Okay, not real. Open the public hearing. Do you have anyone signed up for public hearing number one now?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Close the public hearing. Alright.
I move for approval.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? On.
Need a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin.
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Five zero.
Alright, hearing number two, ordinance to require triennial renewals for tax exempt status. Glenda, is this you? Okay, you're gonna lead us. Alright. It's one we've been working on for quite a while.
Right, just to summarize, um, this public hearing, um, is for the board's consideration on an ordinance that would require triennial reviews for tax exempt status. And this triennial review would apply to all tax exempt properties except those owned by governmental entities. Um, that would be approximately three hundred and thirty-five, uh, different parcels.
That is net, that's, that number is net of the government when?
Yep. There's a total of five hundred and sixty-two tax exempt properties. Um, and two hundred and twenty-seven of those are owned by, um, state, local and federal government. So the three hundred and thirty-five includes the six that Orange County has specifically designated as tax exempt under their own authority. Um, and in those ordinances that granted that tax exempt status, those six are already required to file the triennial, um, renewal application. But we've never really had a process internally to actually do that. Um, so as presented, um, this renewal process would, um, apply, um, to the broadest base that the board has the authority to require it from, which, um, includes churches and other nonprofit organizations that are designated by the state as tax exempt, either by classification or by specific designation in the different state code sections.
Okay, Glenda, I need you to, to, to unstrangle my, my head here. You said that the, the six that the board, uh, has approved are already required to do the triennial?
The ordinances that were adopted, giving them that tax exempt status, do require it.
Well, that's interesting, cause it's, those ordinances were, were drawn up over a period of time, weren't they? It wasn't all just, you didn't draw up all of them, did you?
No, I think I did.
I did them.
Okay. But we, so that's always been, we've always put that in there, but what I hear you saying is we didn't really enforce that.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
So part of, part of what this does is put a mechanism in place to enforce the, that reporting, not only for those six, but, but others.
Other than twenty-nine.
But the other thing it does, and we talked extensively about this, is that some of these exemptions are either granted by statute because of category or were granted a long time ago. And the use in the last twenty years or more could have, and in probable, many cases has changed. Maybe not to the degree they're no longer eligible, but we don't know that. And that's, that's the other part of the problem.
But the ones that are granted without our input, those, those organizations still in, I'm, I could be corrected here, I'm not standing on this absolute truth. But those organizations have to file tax returns. And they have to, they have to satisfy the IRS that they're still nonprofit.
But they're not filing it for a specific piece of property.
That's right.
They're following, filing it for an organization.
Churches don't have to file anything.
Well, churches don't, but. It's not, it's not, i- in, my understanding is that in so, in, in certain cases, it's not tied to a piece of property at all. It's an organizational.
You're saying an organization can be nonprofit, but they can own a piece of property that's somehow not eligible.
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Right.
For example, I, Mr. Mr. Frame and I had a conversation afternoon, you could have a church that builds a new building and turns your old building into a gold gym. And that would not receive an exemption because it's now not a church use, even though it's a church owned building, it has to be.
Or I'm thinking even of a, of a home. Somebody has used it now as a group home and it qualifies under those things. But they've decided no longer to use it as group home and they're just running it out for the income, for the same organization. Uh, but it, because it's, uh, now not being used for that purpose, then, uh, it would no longer, uh, get the tax exemption. And out of three hundred and thirty-five, it wouldn't surprise me if there's a couple that no longer have that, uh, are meeting that requirement.
A rescue squad that is no longer utilizing a structure that it owns and fails to file its paperwork appropriately. And then there's a long drawn out course that has to be taken.
Theoretically, that could.
Theoretically, that could happen, yes.
Alright. But only in the town.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think we were doing the churches, but okay, I, I get that now, so. Alright.
Okay, any other questions, Glenda? Alright. Thank you. I'll open, open the public hearing. Anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker signed up.
Okay.
Bill Speeden, one two zero four six Blue Hill Drive.
Okay. Come up, Mr. Speeden?
Yeah, I think I've talked to all of you, most of you, about this thing, uh, a couple of organizations got a little exercise over it. Mark sent me the, uh, material on it. After reading it, I'm not sure that I still understood what the hell's going on here. But, uh, it looks like, uh, what people I've talked to, uh, requesting is what, whatever you can do to give this a kiss treatment and keep it simple and keep the red tape out of it, the better. It sounds like overburdening, there's a red new office with, uh, mailing and red tape that, uh, is superfluous. It won't, won't gain you any dollars, but it'll cost you a few. And that's, that's all I really, uh, prepared to say for myself. I don't represent any organization. I had a resolution last time, but I called off the dogs on that one because of whatever.
That's it.
But I mean, one, one, one thing in here says that it's a May, and another thing says it's a chow.
They mean the same thing.
And whatever, uh, however much you can slip out of the chow into the may, uh, would be to the public interest. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, Allison?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Close the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alright, any, any discussion?
Well, yeah, I, I'd like to discuss it a little bit. I would, I would just suggest that for organizations that have already filed this. I mean, we've gotten it down fairly simple, but it, it seems to me a, a simple, nothing has changed, everything's the same as when we filed the first time. It's probably adequate for somebody who's already filed, but. It's probably adequate for somebody who's already filed, but.
I, I, I had a similar thought. I mean, as a matter of fact, I've, I've been working on my land use taxation forms and anybody who's ever dealt with those every year has, ha- has a certain reaction to them that, uh.
Well, mine's real easy, yes.
And, and I, I'm not so sure that there shouldn't be a, uh, you know, a, a top half of the first page of this form where there's a certification that says, you know, everything I said, yeah, everything I said three years ago is still correct and that's, and then, and then that's it. I mean, that.
That's fine.
I, I, I would not be opposed to having something like that. I, I wouldn't be opposed to having it with land, land use, but I understand there's a state requirement for that, so it's out of our control, but.
See, that would, that would not affect the actual ordinance language. That would just be the internal policy documents that we draft.
Right, and so I, 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 you know, I, I would, uh, I would propose that we consider that in, in, you know, working with Glenda and, and Commissioner to, uh, I, I think the point that Mr. Speeden made is exactly the right one. This, this is not something we necessarily really want to do, but, but we need some information that we don't now have. And the simplest way we can get it and the less painful, least painful way we can get it, I think is what we're, what we're struggling to try to find. Probably need all of this to initialize the information, the database to start with. But after that, we should, we should make it as simple as we possibly can from a procedural standpoint, so.
With those three hundred and thirty-five, uh, we're losing about eight hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes. That's probably two cents on the, uh, tax rate. But I suspect, I suspect that, uh, the citizens of the county are getting a lot more value from the various, uh, uh, organizations that, that get this, uh, ta- tax exemption than that two, two cents rate. So I think, I mean, I, I think this is a good thing to do to give this, because I think the, the, uh, I think tax exemption, these, these people do contribute to the community in indirect ways, but they do commute, contribute. So I, I don't, I don't.
I think you make an important point. We didn't set out here to try to, uh, throw people off of, of the list or anything. That's not, that's really not the intent.
These guys do, you know, whatever, whatever group they are, they do a lot for the community and, and I think we need to, uh, recognize that. That's why I made that point. They're, they're providing value in excess of their, their tax exemption.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Frame.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin.
Aye.
And Mr. White.
Aye.
Five zero.
I need one more motion.
I move to adjourn. Second.
We adjourn.